This is the February 6, 2012, City of Lake Forest Committee of the Whole Meeting. I'd like to begin by having a roll call.
Admiral James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Chairman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Panneleon.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Schoenider.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Name, presence or absence? Acting Chairman, we have a forum.
Thank you. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of the January 3, 2012 meeting. First, I'll ask if there are any additions, changes, deletions, or corrections to the minutes. Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes.
And move to approve the minutes. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. The next order of business is to conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed plan of operation and governance for the city's residential and small commercial retail electricity aggregation program. First, do we need a motion to open a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The presentation is going to be made by Karina Walters.
Thank you. Chairman, good evening, and members of the committee. We've talked within the last few months a lot about municipal aggregation. And tonight, because of the fact that we're holding our first of two required public meetings, and I'm going to go a little bit more into detail as quickly as possible. In the audience tonight, we do have former Alderman David Grumhouse, as well as Kurt Volkman, who are part of the city's Subcommittee for Electrical Aggregation, in addition to Alderman Palmer, who's part of that. So tonight, we're just going to talk about background. What is municipal aggregation? We're going to talk about the consortium that the City of Lake Forest is part of. We're going to be talking about the status of what are some of the projects that the consortium is working on. That also includes the plan of governance and operation, a request for proposal, and the next steps. So what is municipal aggregation? Essentially, the Illinois Power Agency Act indicated that municipalities can pool the electrical loads of small, commercial, and residential customers located within their municipal boundaries. Once approved by a referendum, municipalities can negotiate electricity supply and service agreements on behalf of the municipality and the residents. As part of that, there can be multiple municipalities that join together. So, for example, I believe at your November 21 city council meeting, the council did approve being part of the North Shore Electricity Aggregation Consortium. Members of that consortium include Deerfield, Glencoe, Highland Park, Lake Bluff, of course, ourselves, Northbrook, Park Ridge, and Skokie. Now, some of the benefits for the city to participate in the consortium would be lower consulting costs, would be to have a uniform contract among at least eight different municipalities, as well as greater bargaining power for the contract, service, as well as terms. So what has the North Shore Consortium done to date? The city council, as well as the consortium, has executed an intergovernmental agreement. We have, the consortium has secured technical assistance with legal counsel, as well as we've been working with a consultant. So what's the status of this actual working group? The group is continuously working on the plan of operation and governance. Before you this evening, you do have a copy of that plan. The group will be working on a request for proposal, as well as the group will be working on a supply contract to identify an electric supplier in the future. So what's the plan of operation and governance? It's basically a management plan for the aggregation process itself, and this is a required requirement by the statute. So parts of the plan include what is the role of the consortium, what's the role of the villages and cities, what's the role of the consultant, and what are the supplies and services that need to be procured. The status is there is a draft plan before you, and it's ready for public comment. So to go in more specifically about the plan of operation and governance, what's the role of the consortium? The consortium actually coordinates the plans. The consortium coordinates and creates the RFP, which will be for release, and as well as coordinates the contracts. The consortium will also recommend a single supplier to the village or each of the municipalities. Now, the role of the city and village is to facilitate any data requests that we need to give to ComEd in order to keep the process moving as quickly as possible, in order to see our June 1 electricity supply switch, if you will. The role of the village and the city are also to consider any contract recommendations. Now, the role of the consultant, they are to support the consortium planning. They are to prepare any documents necessary for the process. They are to have market intelligence, analysis, and assist with the account enrollment for that future municipal aggregation date. So what needs to be procured? We need a base unit price of the electric supply, which means to make sure it meets all the statutory requirements. As part of that, or a condition, or an option of the base unit price, it's the committees to decide what types of renewable energy are the communities looking for to be part of that process. Now, services to be provided are an initial enrollment and opt-out fee, ownership changes, enrollment, and an opt-out fee, an opt-out, excuse me, no fee, late enrollment and opt-out, and then, of course, a customer service or call-in center. Now, former Alderman Grumhouse will be coming up and actually be highlighting a little bit more of this slide for you, and actually talk about how it is practical in his experience currently. Now, the request for proposal. Of course, the request for proposal is basically going to be the consortium to identify all the specifications in order to seek that energy supplier. For example, not only has the consortium worked on that, but the city's Sub-Electrical Aggregation Committee has been part of this entire process to assist with that. Part of that, the consortium, as well as the city's committee, has decided to go early selection. Now, what does early selection mean? Basically, what that is, is there's going to be about 200 municipalities that are going to be on the ballot, and that are all looking to aggregate at the same time. Now, the advantage of choosing an early supplier, we're going to be going out to bid within the next couple of weeks. We're going to identify an electric supplier, and as soon as the referendum is passed, then we'll be able to secure a commodity price for the future. So basically, we're just going to be getting ahead of all the other municipalities involved. Now, the request for proposal, right now, is currently under review and still being modified. Now, the supply and service contracts. There needs to be a contract with each of the municipalities between the supplier and each of the consortium members. Right now, we're shooting for a target date of April 1. We're also, the consortium members also need to select a base supply bid, and of course, identify any renewable options that we want to incorporate. And right now, the consortium is working on a draft. So what are some of the next steps? Well, tonight is the first of two public hearings that need to be met per state statute, which we're discussing the plan of governance and operation. We're also completing a community education program. After, as part of the community education program, the consortium is also working on a request for proposal to be issued within the next couple of weeks, probably by mid-March. The consortium is going to identify a vendor selection, which the city in turn can say, yes, we want to work with this vendor, or no, maybe we don't want to work with the vendor. There's also going to be a referendum on March 20, which will actually really reinforce the city being able to aggregate. The next step is to execute any contracts, as well as lock in any commodity prices for the electricity. And then, of course, once all that is completed, the city's going to be working with the potential electric supplier, in addition to the consultant, to start having the accounts swapped over from ComEd to potentially an alternative supplier. Now, I'm going to back up to Slide 8, so that David Grumhouse can elaborate a little bit more on that. And after we finish our presentation, we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding the plan of governance.
Good evening. Nice to be back, as always. I just want to touch on this slide a little bit. You know, I think as we've gone through this, you've heard Karina say, you've heard me say, this is a pretty straightforward, no-brainer, if you will, in terms of something that the city should move forward on, because it will save the residents a lot of money. You know, we continue to think that, in looking at the fees, that we will save residents on their electric, on the power side of their bill, somewhere in the neighborhood of 20%, 25%, and on their overall bill, 15%. So it's certainly a real benefit to our residents and residents across the state whose, you know, towns are moving forward with this. You know, there are a couple things that we need to decide on as a city and as a council in terms of how we're going to structure this. You know, the base unit price is pretty much going to get dictated by the market. We've obviously made the decision that we think this early selection process is the way to go. We think it will put us out, A, in front of other people. There will be a lot of towns looking for referendums here. There will be a lot of people trying to bid out their electricity. This will get us in front of them. Furthermore, the quicker we can do this, the more we're going to save, because there's a, most people who haven't switched already are paying an above-market rate from ComEd, and that's what we're trying to get in underneath. So in terms of the things we have to decide, we have to decide about this optional extra renewables. The way the renewables are done here is through renewable energy credits. You know, anyone taking power off the grid is going to basically be taking the power that's offered, and it's going to be, you know, a certain part nuclear, a certain part coal, with a small amount of renewables. And we can't affect that. We can't go out and say, okay, we want to take, you know, 75% wind. It's just not the way the power grid works. But we can buy these credits, buy wind credits, and these credits then go back to developers and help them, you know, create new wind sources or operate their current wind sources. So some communities have decided to pursue this Oak Park when they did theirs, you know, went fully on renewable credits as a backup to their power. The wind credits are very cheap. We think if we went to, decided to go to wind, it would probably increase the power price by 3%, assuming the market stays right now. Having said that, we'd be 3% cheaper if we didn't buy any of these credits. So that's something as a council that you all are going to have to think about. It's a, as a committee, we'll continue to discuss. The other thing are these opt-out fees. At the end of the day, you know, we think that the first two, the initial enrollment and the ownership change enrollment are pretty straightforward. Initial is, you know, everyone gets in for free, and the ownership change is if you buy a new house or come into the community, you're automatically enrolled in the program unless you want to opt out. The late enrollment is a little bit trickier for someone who opts out, someone who's on a different program. So that's something we'll want to discuss a little bit more, and, you know, something we're still exploring, but we'll come back with a recommendation before the next session. And then the customer service and call-in center, all we're trying to guarantee there is that, you know, we have the proper customer service set up, and whoever the provider is, is going to, you know, have enough of a call-in center, enough operators to ask residents questions should they have any. But that gives you a little bit of some of the issues that we're dealing with. The other thing that we're going to want to make sure is for those citizens who've already switched, there are people who've already independently gone out and switched, I've been one of them. This will clearly offer a cheaper price to what residents have been able to switch to, just because that's the whole point of the aggregation. Furthermore, since power prices have come down a lot, even in the last year, it will be beneficial for pretty much everyone who's already switched to get out of their current contract and opt into this contract. And so we're going to need to work with residents how that's all going to work. So, you know, that pretty much covers the main issues. I'd certainly be happy to take any questions if anyone has any. Karina and Kurt Volkman's also here, who's been very instrumental on the committee as well, so.
David, how do we know we have the right group of communities and we're the right number to create the value that we hope to create?
Yeah, you know, we've looked at that and tried to figure out what the best way to do that is, and there has been some back and forth on that. You know, clearly, having the group of communities has allowed us to offset some of the costs, both the legal costs, as well as hiring, you know, Mark Pruitt is our consultant, and Mark, you know, used to run the Illinois Power Authority. He's been a great help and extremely knowledgeable. So from that perspective, it's been very beneficial. You know, there's some question about, you know, should Lake Forest bid alone, or are we going to do better as a bigger pool? And there's not necessarily a clear answer on that, and we're still trying to figure that out with the consortium. But what we may do is ask to have Lake Forest and other, have a separate bid and a consortium bid, and then we could take the better one. I think, you know, having spent some time talking to Mark about this, he believes we're going to get a better price being part of the consortium than we will individually. But certainly, as we go through the RFP process and interview some of the marketing firm and trading firms who are going to eventually provide the price, we're going to look at that and try and figure it out.
I have a question about the contract. I guess the contract is for a minimum of one year?
Yeah, that's another-
Do you have a target in mind?
That's another topic we're still working on. You know, I think we should probably opt for two years. We could do one year, we could do three years. I think if you look at just sort of where power prices have gone and where ComEd is sort of hedge power, they tend to do it on a one-third, one-third, one-third basis. And, you know, power prices, because they largely follow natural gas, have done nothing but come straight down. My guess is they will continue to be very weak as we get through the next few months, just because of the nature of how warm the winter has been and how much gas is in storage. So, you know, from my perspective, I think we should probably do a two-year contract, because I think that will optimize the savings. You never know if we do a two-year contract and, you know, gas continues to go down for another year. You would have been better doing a one-year contract. So that's something that we're going to have to, you know, try and figure out as a committee, and also, you know, work with Mark on that. He's got a lot of insights, and ultimately, we'll work closely with our provider on that. We've got to talk to the rest of the consortium. But, you know, I think our instincts right now is to probably lean more for a two-year contract, because we think we can lock in the best pricing. But that's something that we'll continue to monitor.
I mean, there's also a service component that you don't really know how that's going to be handled until you actually experience it.
That's true. I mean, I think, you know, from the perspective of customers and citizens, this is going to be, they're not going to notice much change here, right?
Right.
I mean, all they're going to get, they're going to get their power bill from ComEd. Everything's going to be on there. Instead of the power coming from ComEd, it's going to come from someone else. And if you have any complaints or any issues with your power or anything like that, you're calling ComEd.
Right.
So from that perspective, I, you know, I think we're pretty hopeful that the service isn't going to be much of an issue. Now, there may be questions, again, if you've already switched providers, if you're moving, that type of thing, that you may need some help from the provider, and we want to make sure that that's adequately taken care of. But, you know, you've seen a lot of communities out there already that have already done this, that did a referendum last year. And, you know, I think you have other states that most of these guys that we're going to be working with have already participated, Ohio. So, you know, they have it down pretty much, so I don't think that's going to be a huge issue.
So you can actually look at how these guys have performed in other locations?
Yeah, and that'll be part of the RFP that we have.
Is that a part of the RFP that they have to demonstrate in a track record?
Right.
Okay.
David, a quick question. You mentioned residents will get a bill from ComEd. If there's an outage issue, they'll still call ComEd.
Yes.
What's the call-in center for them?
The call-in center is basically just there for sort of the initial switching. If you wanted to opt out, if you got involved and wanted to opt out later, again, I don't know why you would. You know, I guess if we lock into a contract price and natural gas, you know, goes from 275 to 150, and what ComEd can actually offer you is better than what, you know, the consortium can offer you, you could switch out, and that you would need the call-in center for. Again, I think where things are at, it's probably a pretty low chance of that happening. But, you know, there will be questions. Again, people such as me out there who've already switched, they may have questions as they roll off their existing plan if they don't, you know, get out of that early. So that type of thing.
And then, to follow up your comment, let's say that happens. Let's say it goes from 275 to 150, and half the community opts out. Is there a, is there a minimum percentage-
No.
-that we're going to guarantee as part of the contract?
Uh, no.
Okay.
And that's, you know, that's on the supplier. That's when they bid it. That's something they're going to have to look at. Again, you know, if we look at rough numbers right now, you know, the current rate for ComEd is about 7.6 cents per kilowatt hour, okay? And that will go down in May to probably about 6.6. You know, we think we're probably going to bid right now, maybe just below 5. So, you know, there's a lot of room here. You know, by way of example, my contract, when I bid this out, is it like 6.5? So again, even an individual who's going out and trying to market time this and do this well, you're just never going to get the same price that you can in a consortium, because, you know, the supplier is able to, you know, manage the load so much more efficiently if they're supplying a giant group as opposed to a single resident.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we need to close the meeting, or Bob, do you have any comments?
The only comment I would make is that I think for the record, certainly the council and the community should know that we are very fortunate to have David and Kurt and Alderman Palmer on this committee, because what's happened behind the scenes, I think, speaks volumes to the kinds of people we have living in Lake Forest, because obviously, David and Kurt and Bob are very knowledgeable about this subject matter, and have been able to provide leadership to this consortium, because we've turned the consortium in a very different direction from where they were when we first got together and we first started meeting, primarily in going out quickly with the early supplier selection and trying to move up that schedule, because there's going to be some 200 communities that have this question on their ballot. And if everybody then goes to the market at the same time, that's going to shift the market. And we want to make sure that we're out ahead of that shift, and we get the most favorable rate for our residents. And so, not only has their hard work paid off for the residents of Lake Forest, but ultimately, it's going to pay off for every one of those communities that's involved in the consortium. So we owe a deep debt of gratitude to David and Kurt and Bob for all the work that they've done up to this point in time.
And David and Kurt have been far more helpful than I have.
And David, good to see you back in the building. Kurt, again, thank you for all your help in this regard, too. You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
So we need a motion?
Well, we should at least see if there's any other members in the public that may wish to comment.
We like no brainers. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Then we need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next order of business is a discussion of the City of Lake Forest 2011 Resident Survey, and that is being presented by Susan Banks.
Good evening, Chairman Waldeck and members of the city council. As you know, in November of 2011, we engaged the services of Fund Council and the Chaddick Institute to conduct an independent resident survey. And we're pleased to announce that the results of the survey have come in. And tonight, with us to present their findings are Lori Marston from the Chaddick Institute, and Manjima Bose from Fund Council, and Carl Seid from Fund Council. So, Lori?
Thanks, Susan. I'm Lori Marston. I'm with the Chaddick Institute for Metropolitan Development. It's located at DePaul University. The institute does a number of research studies such as this, and we also do training workshops for municipal planners and plan commissions. And I'm going to turn it over to Manjima, and she's going to go through some of the methodology and the results for you.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I will be going over the methodology for the survey, and I will also go through a profile of those who did respond to the survey from the community. Then my colleague Carl over here will take over and discuss some of the key highlights from our 50-page report, which really details the rich set of data we received from the community respondents. Because there's nothing more exciting than discussing survey methodology, I'll try to keep my part of the presentation short, so that we can move on to the more exciting world of survey data. Before we get into the details, we'd just like to say that overall, the survey was very successful, and we're very pleased to be here tonight to present the results. And also, please feel free to interrupt at any time if, should you have any questions. The first step in the survey was developing the survey, which began October 3, 2011, when the project team of Chaddick Institute and Fund Consulting met with Lake Forest staff to go over a first draft of survey questions that was created by Lake Forest. Based on that discussion, the project team revised a draft, which was later approved by the city staff. The final survey was then mailed out to about 7,653 Lake Forest households in early November. The next phase was data collection. A total of 1,559 surveys were completed, representing one out of every five Lake Forest households. As you can see from the pie chart, about 25% of these surveys were completed online, 42% were mailed in, and 32% were returned directly to Lake Forest through the white drop boxes or by those who directly dropped off their surveys to City Hall. As relevant, I'll talk a little bit more about the profiles of these different groups of respondents later on in the presentation. The next phase of our survey was data entry. All hard copy surveys were entered into an online survey interface, which included entering over 200 pages of handwritten responses. To ensure the accuracy of this data, the project team implemented four quality control measures. And then, lastly, data entry began in December and was completed January 12. Then began the analysis. First step in the analysis, the project team generated frequencies for each question. First step in the analysis, the project team generated frequencies for each question. Second, cross-tabulations were run to assess the relevance of demographic and other factors in how respondents answered questions. Third, a longitudinal analysis was completed of questions that were included in previous Lake Forest surveys. And lastly, all 209 pages of write-in comments were thoroughly analyzed. We are very happy to report that the survey yielded a very high level of statistical accuracy, of 99% confidence with an error level of 2.9%, which is much higher than the industry standard of 95% confidence with a 5% error level. Basically, what this is saying is that if the survey was run 100 times, 99 times out of the 100, the results would be within 2.9% of the first time it was run, which is a very, very good, very high rating for what we've seen. In addition, as you can see, the survey respondents were well distributed across all Now I'd like to go a little bit into those who did respond to the community survey. As you can see, the majority of respondents were Lake Forest residents living in the city for more than six months of the year. On average, respondents have lived in Lake Forest for 23 years, and on average, the age of children living at home was 13 years old. The majority of respondents were 46 to 80 years old. Something interesting to note is that online respondents tended to be of the younger age groups of 45 years or younger, while mail-in and drop-off respondents tended to be older, of 61 years old or older. And lastly, respondents living outside of Lake Forest more than six months of the year were more often of that older age group of 61 years or older. However, this finding is not statistically accurate as it only represents 24 respondents out of the 1559. So unless there are questions on methodology or the respondent profile, Carl will now discuss key highlights from the survey findings.
Thank you, Manjima. As Manjima said, if you have questions at any time, please feel free to interrupt. We've been looking at this data for about three months, so if I gloss over anything, it's just because I'm so familiar with it. First off, the good news, 95.4% of respondents said they were very satisfied or satisfied with living in Lake Forest. That was the first question of the survey, and that's really a testament to what you folks are doing here. That's a very high rate of satisfaction and also consistent with what we've seen in the 2006 survey where the satisfaction rate was 95.8%. Next off, in question nine of the survey, we asked about the greatest challenges, what people in the community perceived as being the greatest challenge to the character of Lake Forest over the next 10 years. We saw that good fiscal management, economic development in terms of retail and restaurants, and maintenance of city infrastructure were seen as, were perceived as being the biggest threats to the character of Lake Forest, with 88% of respondents saying that good fiscal management was either very significant or a significant challenge. And that's also consistent with the 2006 survey where good fiscal management was also the number-one choice. We did see a difference in economic development, which was at the four spot in 2006, and moved up two spots this year. Next off, we asked about satisfaction levels in terms of different aspects of life in Lake Forest, and we had 15 different options. And people were most satisfied with quality of Forest Park Beach, the appearance of the community, and the amount of open space in Lake Forest, with 97% of respondents saying that they were very satisfied or somewhat satisfied with the appearance of the community. In terms of least satisfaction, the lowest-scoring options were variety of stores and shopping and the availability of stores and shopping, with 57% of respondents saying that they were either very dissatisfied or somewhat dissatisfied with shopping, with the variety of stores and shopping in Lake Forest. And that kind of speaks to the first slide where people said that economic development, where they perceive that as a large challenge. Next off, we have satisfaction with city services and departments, and we had 19 different options on this question, and this was overwhelmingly positive. People were most satisfied with fire protection, paramedic and ambulance services, and library services, but we also saw police protection, maintenance of the beach, and garbage collection as being areas that people were very satisfied. And none of the 19 measures were people more dissatisfied than satisfied. So again, that's good news. In terms of the city staff and city council, we asked five different statements to see how, what people's level of agreement were on statements, and people were most strongly agreed with the two top statements there. City staff is responsive when I call with questions or concerns, and I trust the city leaders to do the right thing. We did notice that 40% of respondents answered that they did not know their level of agreement with the statement. The city council and other boards and commissions are responsive to my needs. We think that that's probably an indication that people are more used to interfacing with the city staff as opposed to the city council directly. We asked a series of questions on consumer behavior, and the first question we asked where people were most likely to shop and dine. And the good news is, people said more often than not that they were most likely to shop in Lake Forest stores, with 37.5% of respondents saying that that was the number one of seven that they shop at. Second was other stores. Those are stores that are not in the mall, as well as stores that are also not in Lake Forest. And then the shopping mall rounded it out in the third place spot. The motivation for shopping and dining in Lake Forest tended to be convenience and support of local businesses. We asked respondents to pick three of seven different responses there, and 94% picked convenience. The other 68% were motivated to shop in Lake Forest to support local business. In terms of reasons why people chose not to shop and dine in Lake Forest, we found that product selection, price, and hours of operation were the most popular choices. Finally, or not finally, second to last, we had two comments, two questions on transportation. The first was related to a public transportation system within Lake Forest, for instance, a bus. And then the second question related to an Amtrak stop at the Telegraph Road Station. The overwhelming amount of respondents, almost 75%, said they would not utilize a public transportation system in Lake Forest, but there was a little bit more support for the Amtrak stop, in which 46% said they would utilize an Amtrak stop. And interesting, the 31- to 45-year-olds were the most likely to support the, or say that they would utilize an Amtrak stop. And then finally, we have two findings that we got an impression that the city was interested in knowing about. The first was the ban on cellphone use while driving. We found that 70.3% of respondents said that they believed that violators should be ticketed, excuse me, if the city were to pass a ban on cellphone use while driving. The next bullet point there relates to the way that people get their information in Lake Forest. We found a huge difference between the 2006 and 2011 surveys where 26.2, there was a 26.2% point increase in the amount of people who said that they got their information from the city's website. So appears to be some more people going to the city website. The dialogue newsletter, as well as the Lake Forest, there were still the most popular ways that people got their information. And any questions?
I have a question. You do these for other municipalities?
Yes.
What percentage of the questions that were in our survey were questions you ask other municipalities? Stock questions, if you will?
We work closely with the city to get questions that were, that were specific to Lake Forest. Lake Forest is different than a lot of communities that we work with, so there were definitely questions that pertain to a lot of different city departments, and we did a real good job trying to get a lot of questions involved. It was a very long survey.
Okay, let me rephrase that then. Generally, as far as the areas you cover, are these typically areas covered in the other surveys, or are there some things that are special generically in Lake Forest? I mean, I don't expect you to have in your survey for another municipality, you know, do you like, you know, the golf course? I mean, or what do you like most about Lake Forest when it's not a survey about Lake Forest? But I mean, general things like city services, shopping, transportation, are these things that are typically in the other surveys you've done?
I would say typically, yeah, those are the topics that we tend to see when it comes to satisfaction with the police department, fire department, and general city council and staff. I think where this survey varied a little bit is in the detail that we got into the different departments. When we drilled in a little bit further, we asked several questions on parks and recreation, several questions on Dickinson Hall, several questions on Croya. And so when you get into those more detailed questions, it's probably where we see a little bit of variance, but typically, those general questions are standard across municipalities, yes.
Well, following up then, is there any way to get data just in maybe comparable communities? And it's the validity of the survey or just trying to figure where we go with it? Because obviously, if there's other communities similar to Lake Forest, we could look at this and say, okay, here's how we're lining up. We're maybe doing a little better or a little worse than other communities. Trying to figure if we're out of the norm. Say with like satisfaction of the downtown area, something we're needing some work on right now, we like improvement, but across the border, all the communities on the North Shore experiencing the same percentage dissatisfaction level?
Sure.
Which would be helpful.
And I think that's something, unfortunately, Fund Consulting, we don't, we haven't worked with that many of the communities out on the North Shore, but I'm sure if you have relationships with those communities, you could probably just speak to them candidly about it. I'm not sure that many communities make this public to other communities. If they do these surveys on a regular basis, unfortunately, we just don't have a direct relationship with any comparable community up on the North Shore here.
Yeah, curiosity.
How many other communities have you done surveys for?
We've been working with municipalities for about 10 years now, so over the 10 years, I think we've probably worked with about 10 to 15 municipalities.
Okay. Do you do other types of surveys other than like a general survey? I mean, are you, are you people that are in the survey business that do municipal surveys, or are you municipal people that survey?
We are survey people that work generally with municipalities, nonprofits, and specifically community development financial institutions. So our surveys will run the gamut from something similar to what we've done for Lake Forest to something for a nonprofit in terms of just understanding the needs of their clients or understanding the market that they work in versus, and the same thing for community development financial institutions. So our surveys do run the gamut of surveys, but we do a lot of surveys.
Let me speak to that. The Chaddick Institute also does survey work. We've done some recent surveys on inner-city bus transportation, some of the mega-buses, the new products that are out there, and have done some other types of survey work like that. Going back to the earlier question, probably the most important thing for you to look at is the changes within Lake Forest and how your residents have changed in terms of the level of satisfaction or less dissatisfaction. Certainly, the downtown is a critical issue. You've already identified that. But as Carl pointed out, there are so many of the questions on services and departments and so forth where you rank so highly. I mean, to see repeatedly on question after question, you know, 90%, 95%, 85% of residents saying they're very satisfied or satisfied, you know, that's a tribute to the community that you rank that high on so many different issues.
How many new questions were there in this survey? In other words, if you're going to track, you're going to be asking the same question over and over again. So you can just give me percentages. What percentage of this survey was identical with the questions that were in the last survey?
The questions towards the beginning, which is the different departments and the services and those sorts of things, the greatest challenges to Lake Forest, those questions have been asked over time going back, depending on the question as far as 1999 or even earlier. Some of the newer questions obviously would be about the cellphone, the Amtrak station. Some of the questions on parks and rec may not have been asked in every survey, all of the recent surveys. The Dickinson and Croya question, same thing. They may not get asked in every survey because there's so many different areas that you want to focus on.
Okay, I could probably get a copy of the last survey from the city, right? And just, I was curious, just go down and look at it.
City staff does have the prior surveys.
Okay, thanks.
We'd say about 50% of the questions were new questions this time.
Okay.
Any specific questions about your ward and how they responded? This was the first time we were able to actually get you your individual reports, and so you could see not only the whole city, but also the responses by ward. I might also add that, as it was pointed out, and I think this is fairly telling of our community, is that people took the time not only to fill out the survey, and this was a long survey, actually longer than in previous years, but then they also took the time to write out comments. And the consultants had to spend a lot of time documenting all of that, and I think we have over 200 pages of comments. And Susan Banks has taken it upon herself to go through those and to see if there's ways to categorize those comments, and so all of you don't have to read through 200 pages. But certainly, they're available if you want to read them, but we'll try and get you the Reader's Digest version here in the not-too-distant future because they're interesting to read. It's sort of telling about some of the different opinions in the city of Lake Forest as somebody might say, you know, "I want affordable housing." The next person says, "I don't want affordable housing," and that, you know, they're one right after the other. So it's good to go through them and get a sense as to what's on people's minds. Clearly, a lot, as the numbers up there show, about stores and what are we doing to fill vacancies in town and so forth and so on. There definitely is a lot of passion and strong feelings in certain areas of what we're doing.
Were there certain written comments that came up in terms of certain wards? For example, did lots of Ward 4 people comment on affordable housing, or did lots of Ward 1 people? Were there certain interests in terms of ward?
I don't believe the written comments are broken down by ward, are they?
No, the open-ended questions, we didn't break down by ward. I would say, following up what Bob said, the last survey was eight pages, this was 12 pages. The other thing that's, we were a little bit concerned about was how many responses we'd get because it was rather long. And some of the people that filled it out did say it was long, but I think it's a credit to the community that people cared enough to take the time. And if all of you did it at your own household, you knew that it was rather lengthy, but there's a wealth of information there that can help you as you're going forward and the whole variety of issues that you're looking at.
I think what we can do is certainly take a look, Alderman Waldeck, back to your point, is take a look at the numbers, but unfortunately, the written comments aren't broken out by individual wards.
Bob, what do we do with this now? We've got a document, we've got the results. Do we distribute it to city staff and department heads? Do you look at it on a monthly, semi-annual? What do we do with this document?
Well, we do a couple of things. Number one, yes, we have already distributed to the executive staff, so they all have a copy of it and they're going through it themselves. Particularly, obviously, they're going to focus on those areas that pertain to their respective departments. We also will be having this included in the packets for the strategic planning exercise that will be going on to, again, provide some context and background for the participants in terms of where the community is at right now. And then I think like we've done in the past is identifying, okay, they've said here's what our key challenge is. Certainly, fiscal stewardship, it was and is, continues to be, an important issue. So are we staying on top of those issues and making sure that when we look at our annual goals and objectives, that we're being consistent with what the voters are telling us? Certainly, I think the other challenge that we have is that, you know, some of the things, while we'd like to take credit for it, you know, if you look at the 2006 survey, you know, teardowns in infill development was a huge one. 2007 wasn't that important anymore because the market effectively changed everything. Even, I think, as they pointed out, the numbers in terms of traffic and parking in 2006 was a big issue. They've diminished in terms of their concern. And so some of those things, again, I think we can influence, and other things, we're just fortunate that there are bigger powers than ours that are influencing these impacts. But always trying to stay out ahead of what the issues are, I think, is the challenge that we face.
And will there be a summary of this on the city website and any information in the next dialogue as well?
Both. What you've received, or maybe Susan Banks can talk to that, we will be posting on the city's website so that residents can go in and take a look at the same results that you're seeing. We will have an article in the upcoming dialogue thanking everybody for doing that and directing them where they can go and look at those. We also do share them. For example, the discussion, a discussion will take place with the Chamber of Commerce about the data and the information that has come back about the business community and what can we do there, and how do we disseminate that information out to various businesses? Because certainly, a variety- because certainly, a variety of product type and office, or office hours, business hours clearly was an issue out there, and so what can we do to working with these businesses to say, what can you do to try and meet the needs of the community? Because if you don't have the products that the community is looking for, they're not going to shop in your stores.
Okay, thanks.
The only things that, again, in the survey, was interesting, and the one thing that I was focused on was just the communication of the city, and yeah, as you go through the survey, you saw that at least the vast majority of people seemed to be looking towards more tactile, tactile paper items for their information about the city, but then I was drifting to the age group of the respondents, and again, a lot of the information, you have to maybe read two or three categories to get the drift of what that's revealing. So it is interesting, and then the other categories I thought were truly interesting were the ones that people had no opinion of, that people weren't using in the community. Say, items like McCormick Nature Preserve, the vast majority of people just didn't know it exists or had no opinion of it all. So I thought it was great just to see what we're using, what we're underusing, and maybe different approaches that we might have to better serve community on this. Yeah, it's invaluable, just even to a council member, and I'd love to get the notes from Susan, just maybe to have a better handle on what the thoughts are, individual thoughts, but I thought it was great. But again, you have to kind of reflect on the information provided.
Absolutely.
It's a little overwhelming, just going through all the data we were provided, I mean, by ward and then for the city as a whole. It took a couple of hours just to scan it, so I think it's the kind of thing we're all going to have to spend some time really digesting and maybe summarizing further to be able to pinpoint. The obvious things are obvious, but there are a lot of hidden little opportunities in there that may not come out on first reading as your eyes glaze over on the 200th response or whatever it is.
If I may.
I have a question for you, if you don't mind. If one out of five citizens responded, then there are four out of five who didn't. Statistically, I mean, you people in this profession, can we extrapolate any conclusions or presumptions about those other 80 percent? The 20 percent who voted or completed surveys, are they indicative, do you think, of that other 80 percent, or is the type of person likely to respond to a survey so much different than the attitude of a person not likely to respond to a survey? Or is there just no way of knowing or of extrapolating the data that we acquired from those 20 percent?
I think there's two ways, two different ways to look at this. Basically, 20 percent of households responded to the survey, which is very, very high from what we usually see from municipalities. The standard that we see in the community is usually a 10 percent response rate, and this response rate is slightly higher than your response rate in 2006, which is about 18 percent. So the fact that you have such a large group of respondents is very, very, is very good, and it's a very good representation of your community. The other side of it is to look at the statistical accuracy of the survey. It was one of the sites that we went into, and it really looks at more than response rate. It is a more accurate measure of how well your response pool represents your community, and a 99 percent confidence level is really based on the number of people who've responded, 15, 59, and to get to a 99 percent confidence level with only a 2.9 percent margin of error is also really, really, really high. Industry standard, again, is 95 percent confidence with a 5 percent error level. So what we're saying is that of the responses that we did receive, the variance between the 20 percent that responded and the 80 percent that didn't respond is likely plus or minus 2.9 percent, if that, and that's very, very, that's very good for community survey.
When we're talking about response rate, is it residents or households?
Households. One survey was sent for each household.
Okay.
I might, the only other item I'd add is that, from a staff perspective, we also look at what's the distribution per ward to make sure that each of the wards are represented, and then also Kathy took a look at the breakdown of who responded by age group and compared that to Census II, which was fairly consistent with what we're seeing in the community as well. So those are some of the other benchmarks that we use, just to make sure that we feel that these are very reflective responses of the community wishes.
One of the statistics that really surprised me was the average of the people responding or the households responding and lived here for 23 years.
Yeah.
I mean, does that, I mean, is there some sort of selection bias there that causes that number to be so higher, or do people just never leave here when they move in?
People are less likely to leave here, I think, when they do come and they like it and they stay. The other thing that may be going into that 23 years is that, as in most surveys of this type, the older residents are slightly more likely to respond than the younger residents. That's a matter of lifestyle and time, and, you know, not having to run kids somewhere and working full-time and all of the other family activities that go into that. So that may play into the 23 years. And as far as the age, that, you need to take that into account, and we did point out in the report where the age, where there was some difference among the age groups in terms of how they responded. Certainly, some of the recreation programs were one, the use of the internet was another. So that's just something to be aware of as you're going through and considering the responses and where to go from there.
We have independent information from like the census, don't we, about how long people live in Lake Forest? I just seem to recall a statistic I heard years ago, that like 50 percent of the residents of Lake Forest had lived here less than five years, or five years and less. It struck me as unbelievable, but I assume it came from somewhere. Would that be something we'd get from the census?
Yes.
And is that correct? I mean, do we know what percentage of people have lived here for five years or less?
I can't quote the numbers, and we are looking at the current census, and we'll have some of that information for you at the strategic planning session, but you do have kind of skewed at both ends. You have a large number of people who have lived in this community for a very long time, but looking at the last census, there was also a significant amount of people who moved in and through the communities, and we do see that with our home sales, with some of the remodeling, and I think some of that has to do with the corporate offices that move people in and out.
Okay, do you have any recollection, just generally, as to what the statistic was?
I don't remember.
25 percent?
I would be guessing.
Big enough for a bedrock.
But we will look that up and get that.
All right. Any other comments or questions? With that, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is opportunity for public comment. Any comments from the public tonight? There being none, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. The whole meeting.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council meeting will start in five minutes.